Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.
Well, I got seven oh two. It's about time for us to get started. And we are going to start off. I'm gonna ask reminders for everybody to start of the meeting. If you are not on council, please be muted, stay muted. And if you would like to have the opportunity during public, public comment, we'll give you the opportunity for public comment. Uh, we also do have a public hearing. So first off, if people are interested in speaking during the public hearing, and this is for a local law amending C two dash nine uh prohibition of holding multiple offices in the city of Cortland and clarification on the language to make it multiple city offices. Uh, that will be our public hearing. If there is anybody present that would like to speak during this public hearing, and this is specific to the potential to amend a local law to amend section C two dash nine from the city of Cortland Charter. Uh, you can either raise your hand virtually, raise it in real life as long as you are on my screen, or put your name in the chat and ask you to do so now. The public hearing is officially open. And if we have anybody would like to speak for the public hearing, please acknowledge, we're gonna leave one minute for the public hearing to be open. And as point of information, this is opportunity to clarify the language to allow people to serve in public office uh for the city, but also for other entities, i.e. to be elected outside the city to serve on a board or a commission outside the city. The language currently does not necessarily make that clear. And we want to make sure that it is clear that we're encouraging people to be able to participate in different things. Here. So second call. Is there anybody present? That would like to speak to this? Public hearing. Third and final call. This is the last public hearing of the year. Local law amending section C two dash nine holding a multiple city offices that they would be prohibited and clarifying that it is multiple city offices that it does not encompass offices that are not city of Cortland as well. We will now call the public hearing officially closed. And I'm going to mute everybody and ask you all to rise if you're able for the pledge of allegiance. Say it along with me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel, if you can, please remember to unmute in particular for votes. It's okay to be muted in between votes and then also uh when it is time, if you would like to comment. First up, opportunity for public comments. We ask that comments be limited to three minutes in length that they are directed to the council as a whole, and they deal with issues that are relevant uh to the city that the city council can take action on, um that they are kept respectful. Anybody would like to comment, please either put your name in the chat or raise your hand virtually or in real life. And we do have a person would like to comment, Amy Bugs, Amy Bugs, the floor is yours. If you can unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. Um, happy holidays, first of all. Second of all, I want to say um thank you to everyone who was um involved in the reopening of Clinton Avenue. Um, that street project has been ongoing and very long time coming, and it's a great new street. Love it. Nice work. Hey, everybody. Um, the second, well, third thing, I guess, three things really quickly um that I have question on as to why they're on the agenda for tonight's meeting and and not that I expect an answer, I really don't, but just something to consider. Um, item number eight, the uh resolution to approve the new wards redistricting. I don't know that. I'm just curious as to why they, we need to discuss that or even approve it at tonight's meeting and why not wait until the new council people are in place to have that conversation? And then the same with um number fourteen and number seventeen. Same reasons, um new mayor, new council people. Um, I would think that they would want to have that discussion as far as what um they're gonna do with their upcoming council meetings. That's all. But thank you, everybody. And again, happy holidays. I appreciate the time.
You too, Amy. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Amy, I'll go reverse order. Um. Usually we do not respond, but I'll go reverse order and answering those early holiday present. Um, number seventeen, discussion regarding city hosting meetings virtually after the thirty first. The Zoom account that we are currently utilizing is my Zoom account. Uh, when I say it's mine, I have paid for it since the start uh when the pandemic and we went to remote, so the city is not paying for the current account. And it is my intention to maintain ownership of this because I've found that I have other things that I can use this account for and the first meeting, I don't know what the plans will be. So I think it's important for the discussion to be out there now so that the uh future mayor, future council members can have a discussion. And I don't anticipate it's a discussion item. I don't anticipate a decision being made. Uh, but it's gonna be quick turnaround between now and January four with the holidays coming up. Number fourteen, citywide ethics policy. There was some discussion at the last council meeting about uh for council. And there was some discussion about whether or not it can and should be citywide with regard to ethics. We do have some things in place. But a discussion is a discussion and you know, some of these things, they don't end and then start. It's and can be and should be, in my opinion, ongoing. Um, asking for people to be accountable and to a standard ethically is a good thing and right thing. And then the third one, in terms of wards, so I've had discussions with the county planners. And uh in terms of their timeline and what they need to do, the county planners are interested in terms of moving forward. So at the last council meeting, a potential change to the ward boundaries was presented um in terms of for redistricting to occur and for it to happen appropriately, they have to follow a timeline. So the city is doing its part to follow the timeline. And as a reminder, these things happen and we'll talk about it when it comes up once every ten years after the census. And I understand there's an argument that while we shouldn't hold the next group accountable. Well, the next group will hold the next four accountable potentially, if you wait to the next one. And I would counter the argument that a council with an outgoing mayor and a council with four members outgoing who have no vested interest in terms of their own uh well-being in terms of political aspirations are going to be fair and objective, whereas if you push it, well, there's eight people that potentially you got eight people who will run for reelection and now might be a little bit more challenging to be objective. So I hope that clarifies and it'll be up to council make a decision if they wanna move on any or all of these. Uh, public comments, is there anybody else present that would like to speak during public comment? And Amy, thank you for the questions.
Thank you for responding.
Mayor's report. Uh, actually, I want to start off and I see that he is present from our code department, right, Everett? I had asked Roy and I wanted to talk a little bit about a property over on River Street. It's a large parcel. And there's been some issues in terms of uh the tearing down of the old structure, the old building, and it does not look great. And we had a good meeting post last council meeting. Uh, Roy, I appreciate catching us up and making sure and uh if there's questions. But in terms of a general timeline, we're going all the way back to June of twenty fifteen when the city was aware that the potential for Cooper Tools to close was coming up. And we were for, had the foresight to ask for a closing plan, and this is required by New York State Fire Code. And that is for all facilities that use store or manufacture hazardous materials. So New York State has some things in place and we were diligent about saying, hey, we want to make sure we know what you're doing. And we did get that closure plan in September of fifteen and it included removal of all hazardous materials from the property. In January of sixteen, the plan was completed and inspection showed that all visible hazardous material was removed from the property. And these are not my words. These are Roy's. Roy's, thank you for putting this together. July of seventeen, the code office received notification uh from the property manager that the DEC had completed a second round of environmental testing. So the DEC has been involved. And moving forward all the way, gosh, I believe that's November twenty twenty. There's a violation notice issued to the property owners to complete property services uh for unsafe and an unsecure construction site because it was not to the standard that the city expected. And all along, we've been watching and making sure that things were held to a standard. And there's been an inquiry in terms of uh temporary fencing to go around. And uh there is to be temporary fencing, which I believe, Roy, that is in place. Yes, no? Gosh, I was over there and I can't remember seeing the fence. It is in place. Um, and I guess I think it is appropriate to give a uh big thank you to a community partner, Contentos, because they've partnered with us on this and are willing to do their part as a great community member to help us secure the site. Uh, so if there are further questions regarding that property, um code enforcement has been paying attention. They continue to pay attention. And we are holding it to the standard. And the mess that is currently there, it might take several more months, but we do have a plan that if uh the property does become a possession of the city that we have a plan. Um, and of course, this would be up to future mayor and councils to decide if they want to follow through, but there is a potential plan to clean up and then get that property back into use. And we're doing, I think, phenomenal job of doing that whereas years past, this thing like that. Hey, look at Buck B. Mears down on Kellogg Road. That property was vacant for gosh, decades. And there's still a structure on there that's vacant. However, it's back on the tax rolls. Uh, there's a section that's occupied. There's another storage facility that was built on the property. It's the kind of thing that we expect, the kind of thing we want to do. One more bit for the mayor's report, and some of you may have already heard, the city was successful in terms of uh the Regional Economic Development Council and the acquisition of funding. And there's two million dollars worth of funds that we can be excited that are coming to our community. Five hundred thousand dollars in a CDPG uh grant. And this is to help income properties in terms of property maintenance. So income properties that are low mod. So we have people in our community that uh make me, I think the correct term is subsidized or rent controlled in terms of where they live. And in order for landlord to be able to make upgrades or to do work on a property, it's difficult, but we're gonna be able to help some out and make sure that everybody has appropriate living accommodations. For Public Works, a million dollars from a bridge in New York. And this will be the culvert at Maple Avenue, Homer Ave. Uh, kudos Nick Doby, his people for continuing to push and to pay attention. I believe after this, there's maybe one more bridge slash culvert from the Waterworks to the Tafne Yoga that needs to potentially be addressed. Uh, with that and all the other work that has been done, uh, we're doing major steps to mitigate potential flooding. And we've had some significant rainfall, some other major events in terms of storms, and we've been able to mitigate potential flooding tremendously better than where it was years ago. So this will be another necessary step forward. And the third one, another five hundred thousand dollars. This is an anchor grant from Main Street. And I gotta tell you, I'm excited. One oh seven, one eleven, Main Street. Uh, Steve Weinberg is the owner of the property. His family have been there for literally decades. Uh, Bernard's, and there's been a couple of different iterations. And my experience with Steve, I'm excited because this building will have money that will help stabilize and just more to make attractive, make downtown attractive and help us keep our buildings where they can be and where they should be. And Steve has been a wonderful building owner. He's been a business owner. And for those who have been in our community for years, you've seen the businesses evolve, going from being, gosh, I think it was men's formal wear, menswear years ago. Uh, hey, I can tell you, I've ordered pocket, the masks that we're wearing. I've ordered large quantity of masks from him. Had t-shirts made there, plaques. Uh, when I got married, me and the grooms, we, uh groomsmen, we got our tuxedos from there. So he has had a can-do attitude. He has volunteered in terms of different things for the city time and again. So very pleased that that structure and somebody a downtown business owner who just keeps chipping away and doing the right thing, just a great feel-good story, in my opinion, for the whole community in terms of seeing things continue to go in the right direction downtown. So nice to be able to wrap up uh mayor's report with some positive news in terms of things incoming. Uh, some additional financing for major projects within the city. Minutes, we're gonna look at the minutes from December seventh. Is there anybody present that would like to make a motion from council, that is, to consider filing the minutes as is? Billy Carpenter?
No, I have a question, Mayor.
Got a second, Jackie. So now I've got a first and a second, and now I'll go to Bruce for a question.
Yeah, I'd want to jump in there because normally we just zip through that so quickly that, you know, it happens, but on page eight, I would like to amend the second uh motion. A motion was made to amend the general fund to take twenty thousand from sales tax for the city photo ID card upgrade. I'd like to amend that too, so it indicates it was also to be used to um create keyless entryways on all city buildings that don't already have those. So it's a dual kind of a uh request for the money.
All right, let me repeat that back to you. Amend the general fund to take twenty thousand dollars from sales tax for the city photo ID card upgrade and uh keyless entry for the doors to City Hall.
Well, I would say for all buildings that the city owns, that's what I would move. That's, that's what I was, that's what we voted on. And the idea being that the ID could also be a card reader, which is how it works in a lot of places. That's, that's where that was coming from. Obviously, that could be modified, but, but I want to make sure the part about the keyless entryways to all buildings was was in there. Um, and the minutes was reflected in the written record.
And keyless entry for all city buildings.
That don't already have them, yes. Yep.
Very good. So there's a proposed amendment to the minutes and to make sure that we're all comfortable with that. Uh, that proposal, Bruce, I'm assuming that's a motion to amend the minutes. So we need a second. So we need a second, and that's Bill Carpenter. Any discussion regarding the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of supporting the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
And give me a wave. All right. Any opposed? Two, three, so it's five. Oh, there's five present, so it's five oh in favor of passes. Very good. Any other issues, concerns regarding minutes from last meeting? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor of um filing the minutes with that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, thank you. Maybe a request.
Mayor, I have a request.
Yes.
Could we please schedule an executive session for the end of the meeting to discuss a contract?
All right, council approval, executive session discussing a contract at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Sure.
Very good.
Brian, do I have to ask for another one for a personnel issue? Is that separate?
Uh, let's say yes, because I don't know if you two are talking about the same thing. So we'll say a contract and a personnel issue. Two items. Um, and I will ask you both the question that will get asked by Rick. Are we looking for action potentially afterwards? Potential action, not that we will, but is there potential for action after?
I think there could be.
Yeah, I guess there could be.
Okay, so for the public's information, there is a potential for action after. Very good. First up, we have a presentation on infrastructure projects uh on Clinton and Oego and a summary in terms of where we are at. What I'd like to do is to pass this over to Scott Burdo, who has a very lovely Christmas tree in his background. There's a little bit of background on Scott uh Burdo. Uh, we create solutions, correct? That's your business.
Create possibilities.
Consultants.
Yeah, very good. And Scott has been in charge of managing the grant funds that have come in for uh Clinton and he's got some other things. So Scott, I actually have the document that you shared with me. I can screen share that if you'd like. And I'll give you the, give you the meeting.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to give you an update as the construction season winds down now. Um, just where we're at for the year and for the projects. Um, the first project on the list is the uh the Community Development Black Grant um for Green Bush in Washington. Um, this was originally a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar uh block grant to uh provide upgrades to the water along Clinton. Um, we were able to uh complete that project well under budget and uh we went back to the state of New York. Um, Tomma did an income survey on Green Bush in Washington at the end of last year. Uh, we requested we use the remaining funds to move over to Green Bush in Washington. Part of the uh situation at the time was uh with COVID, the city had some people laid off in the Department of Public Works. We thought this was a way to put money back into the budget, uh spring in some revenue by doing the work in-house. Um, it was approved by the Office of Community Renewal and uh the, the city's workforce did do a majority of the work outside of the tree removal and the sidewalks there. So in-house labor uh was, you know, forty eight thousand, five oh eight, the material was thirty three thousand, the equipment. Um, that's, that's a charge for the equipment used by the city. Um, and then the contractors was one sixty-three. So the total project cost to uh install the new water lines along Green Bush in Washington and put in the new sidewalks was uh the three hundred and twenty. I just received the uh certified payroll today from your contractor on the sidewalk, so that will be submitted for reimbursement this week. It is a program that the money should be out by the first of the year. Um, the deadline for construction was November thirtieth and uh we have to submit all payments in thirty days, so uh that should be submitted by the end of this week uh for repayment. Um, the next project is the Clinton Avenue project. Uh, to date, um, it was a total project cost of nine million eighty-eight thousand. Uh, to date, we've actually spent uh four million six hundred and thirty-three thousand. Um, as you remember, this was funded by a number of programs. The first program on there is the Clean Water Program through environmental facilities. A total, as we break, we each, each grant covered a different portion of the project. So as we break out the, the cost, you know, one point six million of that spent to date um was through the environmental finance, just a clean water revolving loan fund. Um, we have submitted and received back already one, one million. It's actually one million five hundred thousand. The comma's in the wrong place there. Um, the green infrastructure grant program is for specific parts of the project, like your catch basins, your, your stormwater removal, um your bio swales that are in the uh, the terrorist area. Um, that we could, it's about an eight hundred thousand dollar grant. It's a hundred percent grant for the portions of the project that it covers. Uh, we couldn't submit for reimbursement until we got to fifty percent of the grant, so in the PAPs eight, we, we hit that mark with the five hundred and eighty-three thousand, so that's been submitted. It has not been received yet, still under review. Um, the isolated construction grant is, is along the same lines. It's for green infrastructure and, and sanitary separation. Um, that's a four hundred thousand dollar grant and we need to get to uh fifty percent to submit that as well. Uh, the climate smart was your, what we submitted to cover the, the bike lanes, the paving, the, the sidewalks, the the lighting, um, everything to provide alternate transportation and, and uh move people on a safer route than just using vehicles and gas. Um, so that's uh one point four million to date. It's a fifty percent grant, so half of that will be submitted with a quarterly report. Um, the DS, the drinking water was the amount remaining in the portions of Clinton Avenue that did not uh that were not covered by the CDPG grant because of income. They weren't in this, the income eligible areas. Um, that's the two hundred and ninety-two thousand. That will be covered when we close the loan on Groton Avenue. Um, if you remember, we were, we received a drinking water grant for Clinton in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars that we could not use because we had already paid for it with the CDPG grants. Um, we petitioned the state twice instead of giving that money back. We petitioned the state twice to move it to Groton. The first time they denied us. Um, we went back with some better details and reporting and, and some additional support and they approved it. So we're in the process of closing the loan on the Groton Avenue portion, and when that closes, we can submit those expenses to the DWSRF program. And then the WIFA loan is the remainder of the funds to cover the cost through the loan program with EPA. Um, so that will cover the additional fifty percent of the climate smart and to date submitted the one hundred and ninety thousand, and that's already been reimbursed. Another project that uh that was funded through the um Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund through EFC, um improvements to the South Side Drainage Area, Oego Street Area. It was actually a one point four million dollar construction project that was approved to go out to bid. Um, this is another project that was determined we could do, Nick and his crew could do some work in-house and save some money and do some additional work. Um, so the first, the first few months of work were submitted for labor, material and equipment for a hundred and fifty, or forty-nine thousand and change that has been received. Um, the newer amount of the three hundred and forty-one thousand. We need to do a budget modification because we did additional work from the original budget, so we're gonna ask them to move the money out of construction and into um forced labor and equipment, which verbally, we've already got the okay. So once they approve that, we, that will be submitted for, for now, the engineering to date, uh the twenty-seven thousand will also be submitted um this week for payment and reimbursement. Um, so a number of those projects were, you know, done in-house to get more work done, to, to provide additional work. Um, I do have some other numbers for you too, as well, of, of some work that was done in-house through state funding um with the CHIPS program. Uh, they were able to do five hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of paving this year um through the pave New York, the additional resources. They did another hundred and forty-nine thousand worth of paving um with the emergency winter recovery money. They did a hundred and seven thousand dollars worth of paving. And then this year in the state budget was the first time they've added money to the touring routes in quite a few years. They did uh, you know, eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in-house. And then the other um grant program that Nick administered himself in-house was the lead pipe replacement for your residents. Um, they did thirty-three homes and uh about sixty-eight thousand dollars worth of work with the fifty-seven thousand of that being equipment and labor, and that's already been submitted and reimbursed to the city as well. So you've been able to take some of those grant funds and, and generate, I wouldn't say revenue, but you're bringing in additional money that's going into your general fund to cover your your employees' costs. And then the equipment cost is going into your, your budget to uh provide additional work and, and cover expenses as well. So it's just a quick update on the existing construction projects. Uh, you know, the, the Clinton Avenue will carry over into next year and we'll, we'll start that up again in the spring. And then the South Side Drainage, there's still about eight hundred thousand dollars left in that program that we're putting together. We're amending the, the report now to submit to them to allow us to go out to bid in, in the spring uh for additional drainage work on the south side that uh we're, we're gonna bid out now instead of doing it in-house. If anybody's got any questions, I can do my best to provide you answers now or get them for you. do my best to provide you answers now or get them for you.
I, I have, go ahead, Tom. Are you sure, Bruce? No, go ahead.
Age before beauty.
Well, yeah. Scott, I noticed that the light poles are all set to go up, but for some reason, we're holding off on those.
The construction side of it would be a question for Nick. So Nick, if you know why we're holding off on those, if he don't know, I can find out for you in the morning, Tom.
Okay, well.
Tom, I, I think that those, either this past Monday or last Friday, they were just delivered. I think that there's, there is some supply chain issues on those, but I did get a confirmation. If they weren't delivered, they were shipped either last Friday or this past Monday. I could check with the contractor, see if, if we've received them yet, but it took, it took longer than anticipated.
Yeah, okay, I, I didn't realize that we didn't have them at hand, but you know, is that, that something that we, we might be able to put up this winter? Or you think maybe that's a more of a spring project?
Yeah, they're, they're on the punch list to complete in the next few weeks.
Oh, alright.
By December thirty-first, or else. I'm kidding. For the record, I'm kidding.
Hey Scott, you, you went through those numbers fairly quick. You went through the numbers very quickly and I wasn't able to keep up with it, so maybe you, you could send us.
I can give that doc.
What I'm really looking for, if I, cause I heard you, if I heard you correctly, is the city, because we used our employees and our equipment that we were able to take them at grant money and reimburse ourselves instead of contracting that out to somebody else. Is, is that correct?
Correct. On the CDBG, on the Community Development Black Grant Program for Green Bush in Washington, you, you did a majority of the work in-house with your, your water department and your DPW. So we're able to bill for labor about forty-eight thousand dollars and for your equipment, based on the scale that the, the state uses for equipment, about seventy-five thousand dollars to the grant for reimbursement. And then on the South Side Drainage, our first submittal for labor material and equipment was about a hundred and fifty thousand. And this next submittal for labor material and grant would be about three hundred and forty thousand, roughly.
Could you, could you maybe send that to us tomorrow in an email with the, with that, those numbers? So, and could you, is that possible? You could do that for us?
Yeah, yep, I shared it with the mayor. I can just share it with everybody. I have everybody's email, so.
Okay, and the other thing is, is do you see a lot of communities doing what we did, usually being able to reimburse their, their own people with this grant money instead of having it go, you know, contracting it out?
I don't, because a number of communities don't have the labor or the workforce that, that can do that type of work. I mean, installing for Nick and your crew to install your own water lines and do that level of, of work other than just repairing a break or something, it's pretty impressive for you guys to be able to do in-house to, to install the drainage and the culverts and everything he did on the south, south side drainage. On Oego Street, that, you know, that's something you normally don't see a lot of municipalities do. I mean, you may see some of the bigger cities do it, but a lot of municipalities don't have that, that capability in-house to do. So for you to be able to do that's pretty, pretty impressive for your crew and, and your, you know, the, the, the water department and Public Works and the leadership to have that type of workforce is, is pretty good.
Yeah, okay, well, I've always said leadership matters, so you know, here's another example of it. Good work to the, to the DPW folks. Nick, tell your guys, nice job.
Good job, Nick.
But what you are able to do by doing that is extend the projects and the amount of work you're doing. You know, being able to take that money and, and doing Green Bush and Washington when it wasn't on the plans and we just went to Nick and said, okay, what adjacent area that we can tie in? You know, what, what area can we go to and say it's just continuing Clinton Avenue and, and can you, can you knock off here? You know, that's instead of just turning back five hundred thousand dollars, you were able to do two more streets, get them paved, get new sidewalks, new water connections to an area that, that needed it, you know?
And we did that, and we did that in a fairly quick turnaround time then, because that wasn't initially part of the plan.
No, it wasn't. I mean, Toma did the surveys last fall. We got approval in probably January to move forward. We did a complete environmental and that's what really slowed it down. I think the intent was to do the work in the spring and, and we had to do a full environmental on it to, to, because it was a new area. We had to amend the Clinton Avenue environmental and do a full environmental. And we really didn't get approval on the environmental to July and we were against the November thirtieth deadline, so they really you know, scheduled that and got it done in, in you know, in just a few months after the final approval.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, thank you, Scott. I, I appreciate the, that information and the community should be proud of our folks at DPW and, and the job Nick Doby's doing over there. In a short period of time, he hasn't been in charge that long, so congratulations, Nick, nice work.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And the administrative work behind the scenes, all the people that were involved get, getting, making sure that we qualified in that area. Scott's absolutely correct. It was necessary to make sure it would qualify and there's a lot of legwork administratively by city staff and others and we appreciate their efforts.
You know, it's the same as the Bridge New York. You know, I went to Nick and said, you know, Mac and I went to Nick and said, what bridges and culverts need to be replaced? We put in three applications and a million dollars for Maple Avenue to get that replaced because that was listed as the number one priority for, for replacement. So moving forward, that's a, that's a, that's a big ticket item that'll be, you know, paid for totally by the, the state grant.
Great. Keep it going.
All right, any further questions for Mr. Burdo?
Thank you, guys. Have a Merry Christmas.
Yes, you too, Scott. Thank you. Yeah, Merry Christmas.
You and yours. Stay safe.
You too.
And number two, this is going to be very quick and update on the reval of the city and reassess, that's the reassessment the value of all properties in the city. So for those who are unaware, the city has been, pre-pandemic, we were planning on getting through a reeval of the city where every property essentially is reassessed and there's been a couple delays. I don't know if you've heard about this COVID thing, but that slowed us down. So I asked our, the, the, our assessor is also the individual or his business is the one that won the bid for the reassessment and I can share this with council and if we want, we can discuss further, but you know, project planning startup, reaching out in terms of PR assisting and making sure people understand what's going on with the project. And at the end of this year, heading into next year, I thought it was important to update council to make sure you're aware and make sure the project continues forward. Brian Fitz, the assessor, does a wonderful job, but it needs to be a collaboration between everybody. So the parcel inventory has been done. That means they've looked at every parcel in the city. It's been computerized. There's been data mailers cleanup of data from the responses. They've taken pictures of every parcel. Computerized valuation testing and production. This is ongoing. And then moving forward, now the goal was, the hope was, and the goal was that we would hopefully finish up December, maybe for next year for twenty-two. Couple of hiccups or bumps and pushing back, it's gonna be twenty-three, so next year this will be getting concluded. And there, there's a couple reasons in conversation. So there's the document and it'll come forward, but there's a couple reasons in conversation with Mr. Fitz that it was best kind of wait and see how some things are shaking out. In particular, sale of properties in the city, and I know we're hearing this from other places as well, but sale of properties in the city, man, they're going. They're, they're going fast and the prices are significantly higher than where they may have been months ago. And that can have an impact in terms of a rebound, so holding off on the reval for a little bit is a pragmatic decision and part of that is good news. You know, the housing stock in the city continues to be in high demand and that is having a positive impact across the board. And if we've got questions in terms of rebound, I encourage you to reach out to Mr. Fitz directly. He's the assessor, not just for the city, but also the town of Virgil and the town of Homer. It's another example of a great partnership that we've had with two municipalities that's been more efficient and has done well for us over the years. Any questions from council on that? Good. Consideration of Resolution Authorized Mayor Attendant to an Agreement, the City of Cortland Fire Department Board of Engineers for Volunteer Firefighting Services to Commence January one of twenty-twenty-two, Ending December thirty-first, twenty-two for the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. We have a motion to consider Katie Solomon, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. The Board of Engineers is the supervising body for the volunteer firefighters. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And carries. And point of information, that is the same dollar amount that it was at last year. Item number four, resolution approved contract with Matt Taylor for grass and snow removal in the right of way. So this is well, cutting grass in the summer and removing snow from the right of way, typically sidewalks. And then right of way removal. Now, my brain just processed, if there are items that are left inappropriately in the right of way. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I, I must have missed it somehow in our documents, but I didn't see what, is this basically the same contract as last year?
In terms of, I believe that we put forward the, what the RP would look like and well, you know, it would be better for Mr. Everett Roy's here and he can speak, I think, more clearly to this.
Well, this is the, yes, it's the same contractor as last year and all his prices are, are the same as well.
Okay, good enough for me. Thank you, Roy.
Further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And again, passes five oh. Number five, resolution to amend, to approve the local law to amend section C two dash nine in the city charter, motion to consider. We got Katie Solomon, support Jackie Chapman, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Carries. Number six, consideration of a resolution to award a contract to Toma Development and the contract is to administer financial year twenty-twenty Housing Rehabilitation Grant pursuant to the request for proposals processed, motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Katie Solomon, discussion.
I have, again, just a clarification question. Should the resolution specify to the Toma Development? It doesn't mention it specifically.
Yes, I, I, I mentioned it and I will speak with Devon. We'll make sure that it is into the minutes. So here's why it's not into the, there's two reasons why it's not into the resolution that is listed. Number one, the application date, we had until noon on Friday for applicants to submit. And then that gave me a couple of days over the weekend to potentially evaluate. So when agenda went out on Friday, we would not knew, we would not know. And number two, if I made a recommendation, but if there's multiple applicants and the council decided to go in a different way, typically we've not included until the vote. So we kept it out of the agenda for a reason, but it will be in the final resolution. So Mr. Titler, absolutely correct. The resolution will be to award Toma the contract to administer.
Okay, thanks, Mayor.
Reason why it wasn't there.
Yep. I get it.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Carries. And Toma has administered a number of these. It's been a great, of great assistance to the city with this. Number seven, resolution to designate the mayor of the City of Portland as a certifying officer for the environmental review record for the city's recently awarded fiscal year twenty-twenty Housing Rehab Community Development Block Grant, motion to consider. Jackie Chapman, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. And this is the mayor. It is not Brian Tobin. That stays with the person in office.
Very good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Number eight, consideration of a resolution approved, the new wards is recommended by the Cortland County Planning Department. So we can discuss, we have a motion to consider. Bruce Titler, second, Katie Solomon, discussion. We do have Savannah Hempstead is present. And there she is. So Savannah is representing the county this evening, unfortunately. Chris Jessit, the person who I think I've communicated the most with on this, was unable to be present, but we are graced by the presence of Savannah. Welcome.
I have a question.
Shall we?
I have a question, Ryan.
I have a question, Brian.
I, I was gonna ask if Savannah, if there's anything that you would like to talk about to lead into this, or should we go right to questions? You are muted. There you go.
We can go right to questions. If anybody has any specific questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Very good. Mr. Titler.
It's another clarification question because I remember we discussed this and I'm thinking these new wards, help me with my memory here, Mayor. It used to be, there could be no more than ten percent difference in population between wards, but now that's been reduced to no more than five percent difference in population. So actually, these new wards are essentially more equal in representation than the last ten years. Is that correct? Okay, that's it. That's the only question I have. Thank you.
And a little bit about the, oh, Mr. Michaels.
I, I placed a call in with Teresa today. And Mary and, and Mary, was it Mary Ann? I took my message and she is gonna return my call in the morning. There are some considerations and some things that were not taken into effect when these boundaries are made and the Board of Elections Office have informed me that they've been out of the loop on this. And this, this plays a big part on their part because they need to change things around in time for the next, for the next election. And they would like a call firming up some kind of a discussion between the two, two of you. So I would like to put this on hold until that discussion is taking place.
Well, I can tell you that I did have a conversation with Trisha Jessit Saturday morning and I believe she had a conversation with Bob Howe from the Election Commission and I can't state where they're at. The request came from the County Planning Office and this is from the professional planners who are responsible for driving this. They've got a timeline in terms of what they need to do and what we've done from the city standpoint is we've worked with them and are helping them meet their timeline. So it's up to council and I get if you wanna push this off or if you wanna vote, it'll be up to you, but Katie had a hand up, so let's go to Katie.
My question is, we have to, we have to change the districts because of the percentage, correct?
There has to be a change.
There has to be a change.
Yes, there has to be a change. All the, the old redistricting law stated that it had to be within ten percent for each district and the new law states that it has to be within five percent, so all the boundaries have to be redrawn, yes.
And so, I mean, it seems reasonable to ask your office to speak to the Board of Elections. Would you, I mean, does that sound reasonable to you?
Yeah, so I, I will state that I'm not with the planning department, I'm with the county legislature, but we are redrawing our redistricting lines as well at the county level and they're all going within the new redistricting law. We have been working with the Board of Elections and one of the redistricting law requirements is to make it as even within the election districts. Um, even within the election districts as possible, so that we do not have. Election, so for example, city ward districts outside of legislative ward districts. As much as practical. The main, the main point of it is though, is to get within the five percent. So if we can do that and not. Meet the other requirements, that is practicable, but we are trying to meet as many requirements as possible.
So does that mean that? Um, this time. The city was drawn up, if we approved the city first, then the legislature is gonna try and fit. Within our districts?
Yes.
And that would make it easier for the Board of Elections?
Yes.
Okay. I would.
And speaking with Mary Ann today, she didn't see a much of a concern if this was put off a few days. Until all, all parties were on the same page.
Yeah, you know, if council, if you wanna push this off to January ten, but I'm, I'm a little hazy about why the board, what will the Board of Elections say? What will they do in terms of weighing in? Because there's specific criteria and as you heard from Savannah and you heard in the presentation at the last meeting. There's specific criteria that needs to be followed and, you know, talk to the planners, they've done their job, they've done their job well. And, uh, you know. My, my phone rings too. I've not been contacted by anybody from the Board of Elections. And really they administer the elections. Uh, I'm not sure they should have input in terms of where the lines are. I think then, you know, is the referee actually getting more involved than they should? So it, it's up to you guys to make the decision about where the city lines are. Those of us that have been around. After the two thousand ten redistricting. That there was not as much communication and that communication is being bridged now. And, uh, what we could do, and it doesn't matter to me if it's today, if it's January fourth. But what you could do now is improve where the lines are. And it would make it easier for the Board of Elections, for county planners. In terms of not just drawing the city wards, but also. Potentially redistricting at the county level.
Yeah.
I'm willing to.
I'm okay with voting on it.
I'm okay with voting on it.
I'm good with it.
I would just like to hear Teresa's input since she's been out of the office.
Uh, I hear you, Tom, but further discussion.
So I can tell you from the county planning. Um, department level that this is all based upon numbers. Um, they're not playing any political. Games, they are not playing any favorites, it's all based upon the census block data. And they will redraw, redraw lines as needed if this vote does not pass and. Do what needs to be done to make this the best plan moving forward for the next ten years.
So what you're actually saying. Um, is. It's been done with all fairness, not favoring any particular. Group.
The lines that have been drawn have been drawn based upon the. Numbers that were asked of the planning department based upon the census block data for each specific. Uh, residential area. And you have to make it as equal as possible within that five percent. It's all, it's all five percent.
Uh, with, with all due respect, we all know that the, the census data isn't as accurate as it has been in, in the past years. Uh, because, uh, people just didn't respond to their. Their mailers.
I agree with you there.
I do too.
So we really don't know, uh, how much this is gonna affect people until after the fact.
But they're not.
Hate to say this, but I guess if I was in your position, we do, we do the census over again, but. Uh, that takes time and I'm sure that, uh, nobody wants to wait for that to happen again.
Yeah, that's, uh. Other minds to decide. You made some very salient points there though, Tom, I agree. There's some concerns out there.
Unfortunately, it seems like I'm talking to myself.
Tom, I agree with you, but I just don't see them redoing the census. I mean, that's pretty much.
Oh, no, I, I, I don't see him doing that either, but let, let's take a closer look at things before we, we start jumping and changing boundaries. Have, have the counties, uh. Uh, have the outlining the areas, have their boundaries changed?
Not yet.
So the county's redistricting process is underway, we have started doing different maps at the county level. Uh, the commission for the redistricting has not been established yet, that has to be done next month. For the group to, um, lay out what their plan is going to be to bring forward to the county legislature. But it still has to be within that five percent per district.
Uh, so you go through the county boundaries and find out that, uh, hope we made a mistake, maybe we should have changed more of the city boundaries. Right?
I'll absent a recount or some other sort of change.
Last time you did the county boundaries first, if I recall, then, then you came to the city to change your boundaries.
That was. Essentially the way, Tom, I agree with you, that's the way I remember it, the, there was changes. Outside of the city in terms of government. And then there was a recommendation that we make some changes, but. Uh, there was reluctance. From the eight people on council, quite frankly, to go to seven, that was the recommendation. Hey, legislative districts were reduced from nineteen to seventeen, so seventeen representatives. And the recommendation was that. Since there would be seven city legislators, there should be seven city wards. Uh. Now, if council is interested in entertaining a discussion about a reduction in the number of council members. Then I think. There, there's a worthwhile discussion there. Uh, if we're going to stay with eight, then by extending the second ward to the northern border of the city. It gives county planners the opportunity to do more in terms of legislative districts. And to try to keep a legislative district lines consistent with a city. Ward boundary line. So. Yeah, and it, it's kind of the chicken or the egg, who goes first, we or do the county? Um, and frankly, I think the county they got theirs done before us last time and. Um. You know, be, being asked or. Asked or told to go from. Eight to seven, I, I didn't think was really well received by the council at the time. So this gives us the opportunity to make the decision. Which we always have the opportunity to make the decision, but we're making the decision and also. Allowing for an opportunity to correct some of the. Challenges that are out there by not having those lines match, match up.
Well, if they were willing to wait, then the, the city would be willing to work with them if something needed to be changed, but. Uh, the fact that we're gonna approve things first, that's gonna be kind of tough to come back to the drawing board. Not that we can't.
And if the city wants to wait and hold off, I mean, we have. A little bit of time to finalize the county plans, so if you wanna work together in the future, that is an option as well, Mr. Michaels.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me, I just wanna get everything on the table and, uh, so my colleagues, uh, can make it on it. Uh, a decision.
I, I'd like to take, we have a resolution, I like to take the vote, we've had this map for quite a while to be able to study and look at it and it's all based on population and it's, it's more fair than the ones we have now. Let's, let's take the vote and see how it shakes out.
All right, council, vote on the table is whether or not to approve the, uh. New wards is recommended by the county planning department, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? I'm gonna say four, one, uh. Four, one, it passes, Michael's against.
Yep, I'm, I'm just willing to wait to see how things shake out.
Nope, understood.
Um, right.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, in a perfect world, but it sounds like it has never happened that way, but in the perfect world. The county and the city would work together. Side by side, tandem, in re, in work. You know, they would have started six months ago and. That would be the perfect world, but has it ever happened that way?
I can't speak, I can't speak to the past, but outside of what happened in, I think, believe it was two thousand eleven after the two thousand ten census. Uh, but we are. Working well, I think with the county planners and they've, when I've looked at what they've done, um. They, they've done their part. And they've done their job well.
When will this take effect, Savannah?
So it takes effect upon the next election. For your districts, so not for this dish, so next four years, after the four years. For your election terms comes up. That's when it'll take effect, so two thousand twenty-four.
Our elections are.
Well, for us, it's two thousand twenty-four, yes.
So, okay.
Twenty twenty-three, election for two thousand twenty-four, the election in November of twenty-three.
Believe me, that'll be here before you know it.
Very good, Savannah, thank you for your attendance this evening, thank you for your input. Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
Happy holidays.
You as well, thank you.
Number nine, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an amendment to a nineteen, uh, two thousand eighteen agreement with Chobani of New Berlin. Setting terms for acceptance of waste acid whey at the price of. Point zero four five cents per gallon. Such acceptance can be used to cover any shortfall in feedstock that may be occasioned by burn dairies facility retooling in the summer of two thousand twenty-two. We have a motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Jackie Chapman, discussion, uh, I can give you a little bit of background, there was some news about. Burn dairy and they are doing some changes to their plants. Uh, over there, burn how they call. And we had a very productive call. With the leadership from burn, because as I think many people know. The way that is produced there comes down to the city wastewater treatment plant and it's converted. Uh, turn to methane and that is used to offset, used to generate electricity. And it's done a tremendous job of offsetting a, uh, large cost. And I'm stealing Bruce Adams' thunder, Bruce, I apologize, but this is. Uh, opportunity for me to compliment you because the conversation. In terms of, uh, the discussion with burn, uh, Bruce was very direct about, hey, we need to keep things running at a certain level. Uh, the contract. Does specify that we are expecting a certain amount of way. Uh, they were aware and very professional and they anticipate being able to hold it there. Uh, Bruce's, Bruce Adams, this is more of a backup, correct?
Uh, that's correct, uh, Chobani. Uh, they actually kind of ghosted us the last couple of years after we raised our price to them, but they reached out, uh, to me a few weeks ago. Uh, wanting to know if, uh, if we would have. Uh, a desire to accept away from them, I told them we might have an opportunity while the local burned dairy is, uh, down. Uh, and, uh, you know. Uh, point of clarification, that's, uh, point zero four five dollars, so four and a half cents, uh, per gallon, which is fifty percent more. Uh, than we're charging the, uh, burned dairy, uh, Syracuse operation, the local burned dairy. Uh, brings it for free as part of our agreement with them. Uh, so it's, uh, a potential revenue source and a way to, uh, uh, keep our generator running at, uh, optimum. If we have a shortfall.
I'm glad I didn't steal all your thunder, thank you for the clarification. Questions for Bruce or questions about this? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
For the record. The motion passes. Jackie, I need your face on screen as well, can you please?
Sorry, sorry. I apologize.
Just for the record.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so the vote was six oh, we did have, uh, Sam Adams join us, so the vote officially is six oh. Thank you. Uh, yep, and we're allowed to do the video stuff, but it must, we need to be able to see people to make sure we can ascertain that it's the person who is supposed to be voting is voting. Um, now grab your cocoa. Number ten. Resolution allow the mayor to enter a contract with Empire State Development to accept the grant that is a twenty percent match for the Parker School Early Education Center. There is a maximum value of this grant of five hundred thousand dollars, a motion to consider. Katie Solomon, second Jackie Chapman, discussion. So this is the Empire State Development Grant that. Uh, has been discussed, the city wrote, received. And there is a member item that actually comes from the dormitory authority. That is the one point. So two or three. I got a lot of numbers. Um. I think it's one point three, we'll call it one point two million, just to be on the safe side, all right? Uh, so there's that. That's dedicated. And then we applied for and we were successful in receiving this grant, which can be up to five hundred thousand dollars. And it's a twenty percent match. Um, they are willing to go quarterly. And so when we hit the, uh, first quarter. Of the match, then we can get reimbursed and then the second quarter or the half, then we can be reimbursed up to half. Uh, third quarter and et cetera. So there, we are not. Required to do the full. Gosh, what was it, three point nine million that would get us to five hundred thousand, if for some reason the project falls shorter there in terms of cost. Uh, we can still be reimbursed for a portion and not be penalized. Um. Yeah, and it's the same as the other, it will require somewhat of a. Front load or a match, which is why it was important when we talked about rescue plan funding. There'd be a hundred and eighty thousand for rescue plan funding to go toward. Uh, Parker School, so that will help stimulate that forward. Motion in terms of paying the bills when they start to come in. All right, questions regarding agenda item number ten? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Carries. And I probably should have said it before, but full disclosure, many people know. I am the husband of the executive director for the YWCA, who's a potential, YWCA is a potential tenant. And when the question comes up, is this a conflict of interest? Um. That there's no financial benefit to the YWCA in terms of this project. Uh, they hope to break even in terms of providing childcare. So the YWCA in terms of the childcare classes that they have there. Uh, their, their goal is not to make money, their goal is to provide childcare to families in our community. Always willing to talk more about that, there is a strong need. Number eleven, resolution authorized the mayor to enter into a supplemental agreement, number two, for phase one of the Gateway Project, uh, this is Clinton Avenue, motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second Bruce Titler, discussion.
Very exciting.
Yep, and it's laid out in the agreement. Maximum amount payable under this agreement is increased from two hundred twelve thousand to two hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and eighty-six cents. And. Those keeping score at home. Boom, 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 the.
Why don't we ask Nick just to speak to it real quickly, Mayor?
Hey, Nick, you know off the top you had, or you want me to read?
Uh, twenty-seven thousand eight eleven eighty-six. Um, the, the, the difference is it's still within the, the contract funding, uh, or the project funding for that matter, additional work. Um, uh, in the eleventh hour was required, um. By the DOT, um, for some. Uh, ADA accessible ramps and a few other items. Uh, that pushed off our schedule, uh, and there was additional elements, uh. From CNS that was design inspection and project tracking that, uh, was. That is reflected in that increase, um, so it's still within the project budget. Um, it's just basically construction came in under, inspection came in over, so you're moving the money from construction to inspection.
Thank you for that explanation.
Yep.
All right, further questions? And, uh.
And I just said real quick, Nick, this whole project has come in under budget anyhow, hasn't it?
So the, the, the gateway's, uh, a multi. So the, the, the gateway's, uh, a multi, i- i- it's, um,
Multi is multifaceted.
Yeah, a- absolutely, so this, this specific one with, with CNS is the, the bridge work, the lights, the paving, the striping. So it's separate from the, the main part, uh, portion that you're probably thinking of.
Okay, all right, thanks for that, Claire, thanks for clarification.
Yep.
Further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Passes six oh, you know, if we, we and to toot the horn in terms of the city and where we've been a couple of years ago when we repaved Madison, there was a number of intersections that were not handicap accessible, not appropriate, you had curb and then street, and it was very challenging, and when we did the paving, uh, there was another source of money called program income, and council designated that towards fixing, and I believe it was nineteen intersection, I can't remember, it was either nineteen intersections or nineteen ramps, uh, so this is something that has been important, uh, you've got people in wheelchairs, people with mobility issues, heck, you got parents pushing kids in strollers, and these little details make a big difference, so that's, that attention to detail that we really do appreciate, getting the job done and continuing to make things better for people. Number twelve, resolution authorized the superintendent of public works, who's Nick Doby, to enter into agreements with the following vendors. These are for service agreements that we current, you currently utilize on a regular basis. AccuGPS, Dyson Crup, which is the elevator, Air Temp HVAC, which deals with the armory, Air Temp HVAC deals with the youth bureau, Upstate Temperature Control, uh, Service, and that is at, uh, that ends at the end of this year, and then also mechanical from the same group, and that also ends at the end of this year. Uh, EAN, which is the employee network, which provides resources to employees, Advantage Commercial Cleaning, which covers a number of buildings, and Cummins Northeast Generators. So these are all contracts that are important in terms of the maintenance and the functioning of our facilities, do we have a motion to consider? Sam Adams, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion, and if there are questions, I would defer again to Mr. Doby.
Yeah, I, I do, Dick, I, I've, um, I sort of apologize to you here because I, I normally would have called you ahead of time to get this, but I just had a week that has just consumed me pretty much, um. What is the, are these, are these the same, obviously with, you know, prices are going up every place, I, I, what's sort of the average increase with these contracts, service contracts?
Uh, most of them are the same, uh, some of them are going, uh, some of them are going up a little bit, um, in, in the, the prices, um, I, I would say less than the standard cost of living, they're, they're almost the same contracts from last year.
Um, okay.
That, I, I think it's, it's included in most of the, the documents, um, but, I, I mean, these are small two, three, four thousand dollar contracts for services that we have all year, um, they're, they're similar to, uh, very similar to, I think, uh, a number of months ago, the Orkin Pest Control, Syracuse Time and Alarm, and there was another one we, we brought to council, uh, as they provide services for us in some of our facilities on a regular basis.
Okay.
They're, they're not huge, you know, ten, twenty thousand dollar contracts, most of them are, you know, uh, twice a year, and I think the costs, uh, on a few are just over a thousand dollars. Uh, the HVAC ones are a little bit more, but still like, uh, you're looking at all year long service for like, you know, just over three grand.
Okay, all right, thank you, Nick.
Yep.
I'm just curious, how often do you revisit and, um, shop around for other vendors of these services?
Uh, it, it depends, like, uh, for instance, the, the not, not necessarily this group right here, um, ENI Network, it's been the same contract since nineteen ninety-nine, um, I think that it's went in front of council once in like two thousand and eleven or something, so we're just trying to update, uh, some of these services, um, we definitely, I, I believe when, when there's more than nominal increases and it goes again to the city procurement policy, we look at, should we bid this out, a- and we do that accordingly, um, the, the bigger contracts like City Hall Cleaning and stuff like that, we always bid out.
Right.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carrie, six oh. Number thirteen, resolution authorized the mayor to enter into an agreement with Mike Dexter for maintaining the grounds at the waterworks, motion to consider Katie Silliman, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion.
He's done a great job all these years.
And for the general public, this is primarily the beautification and the decorations for the holidays. Um, I, I agree, it's wonderful place to bring, stop by, drive by, bring little kids. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Karen's, six oh. Number fourteen, and this is for council discussion, however far you want to go, discussion regarding a citywide ethics policy. So last council meeting, there was some discussion regarding council itself and, uh, opportunity to create essentially rules of order and accountability, and I took from that some discussion or at least a desire to talk a little bit more broadly about an ethics policy with regard for the city, um. So opportunity for discussion.
I think that this is a hot potato that we definitely should, um, hang on to for the, with the next administration. Next council, we shouldn't let this one drop.
I agree. Well, I'm gonna publicly say thank you Katie and Bill for volunteering because when you're first to talk, um, I would encourage, I, I wholeheartedly agree, I encourage you to discuss amongst yourselves with the, uh, other returners and then the incoming council and the mayor-elect, uh, what, what should be expected in terms of the elected officials, and if I had ran again, if I was elected again, this is something that I would have pursued, I think we're in a time where, uh, we want to continue to build trust and faith in government, and one of the thing, one of the ways that we can do that is by saying, here are our standards in terms of what we expect of our elected officials, uh, we can revisit in terms of employees and others, people that contract with the city, people that do business with the city, um, members of our boards and commissions, and now is a good time to do it because we don't have a problem now. I, we, we have great people who are doing great things, and I'm going to speak to that toward the end of this meeting. Uh, but, you know, to address things before there's a problem in my mind makes a lot of sense, uh, so if it's Katie and Bill or if it's other people in terms of current elected council members or people that are not elected, but will be, or are elected, but will be in office January one, wholeheartedly support and I encourage you, because Tom, you worked on this with John Bennett for a little bit, correct?
Yeah, we did, uh, we, uh, we came real close to, uh, rolling out something. Uh, I, I still have all my notes, uh. Uh, I, I, and I really don't know what put the brakes on it, uh, you know, I, you know, I agree that, you know, we probably should have had something in place by now, and forever, for whatever reason, uh, it, uh, never gained the momentum that, uh, we thought it would.
Sounds like planting a tree, the best time was twenty years ago and the next best time is today, so, uh, if you want to enjoy the shade, twenty years ago is great, but it's, it's never too late, so, uh, but I've got a lot of faith and confidence in what is going to happen after January one, so if it is something that you all continue, if there's anything I can do to assist, by all means, give me a call. But, yeah, with Tom carrying over as well, you have a tremendous resource there. Further discussion regarding potential foreign ethics policy, Tom?
Are you, are you looking to be, um, appointed to some, some committee then?
Not if there's ethics involved, good lord, no. I am angling for nothing.
Feeling you out here, Brian.
Number fifteen, uh, discussion regarding a citywide employee vehicle policy. So the genesis of this conversation, as we've, uh, been through a review from the comptroller with regard to some other things, i.e. credit cards, uh, there, there were some questions that were asked, and at one point I was prepared to make a proposal, but again, uh, did not want to put a, something in place that uh, would beholden others in a short couple of months. But my recommendation would be for council to have a discussion and with mayor-elect and department heads about a citywide employee vehicle policy, um. Council thoughts?
I think now that you're gonna have change, this is a good time to look, to re, to relook at this, you know, I mean, one of the things about government, it's not hardwired to really be innovative and make changes, that sometimes doesn't get rewarded, government is, I think, you know, it's, let's do what we've always done, it's been safe, you know, work before to work again kind of approach, and I'm not just talking about local government, state and federal government too, you know, they just moves at a, at glacial speed. So I think this is, you have some new blood, some new folks, and this is probably a good time for, for those, for all of you to take a look at, do we need to do it the way we've always done it in terms of who gets a vehicle and why, and how close to the city should they live, and do you really need that vehicle, you know, to, to do your job, or is it just a nice perk? Those are my thoughts.
It's funny that we bring this up now, I, I don't even know, um, uh, who has a city vehicle anymore.
I don't either.
And I, I used to know, uh, everyone that had one.
I never did. Um, that was just part of the day-to-day business of the city that I wasn't aware of. When I heard, you know, I just, I just feel like it should be necessary for your job, I don't see why a vehicle should be a perk for anybody.
Well, Tom, if you'd like, I can ask department heads to provide essentially a vehicle audit, who, uh, has been designated, who does have vehicles and what are their guidelines, what's currently in place?
Yeah, that, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Um. I, I also found out not too long ago that, uh, uh, we used to utilize one, uh, one filling, uh, setup, uh, for, uh, city vehicles, and now it looks like we're utilizing two.
Uh, what are you referring to?
Uh, when, when personnel, uh, go to fill up, uh, uh, county vehicles and, uh, uh, city vehicles. Looks like, uh, some still utilize the, the county pumps and, uh, I also see bills, uh, regarding, uh, the pump up to the, uh, bus garage.
Uh, the school district, correct? When you say the bus garage, the school district bus garage?
Yep.
All right, and I can ask the, I, I can ask Chief Sandy to provide, ma- make sure we confirm, my recollection is a couple of years ago that the uh, police department did make the change to the school district, um, ease and convenience, you know, location, and I think there was a couple other factors, but I'd be more than happy to ask uh, Chief Sandy and to track down, I, I believe it's just police, but we can track down and see what's being utilized.
So when you, when you do that, Brian, can you let us know who currently has vehicles? Thank you.
Very good, will do. And any further discussion for agenda, agenda item number fifteen? Number sixteen, the approved city of Portland occupancy tax steps to implement it, uh, this would apply to hotels, motels. So a quick update, and again, information to be carried forward. We did apply a number of years ago for the opportunity to have a citywide occupancy tax, and the idea is that, and in particular, the vision as the discussion took place about Clinton and what that could look like, and the conversation earlier about the bridge and decorations, what can we do to further dress up the area? You know, what else can we do to continue to maintain the area? And the fact that the majority of the hotels, motels, not just in the city but in the county are located right there, uh, an opportunity to potentially reinvest and give them more opportunity to keep doing what they do. And this is something that hopefully can continue forward, I wanted to publicly state, I've supported this from the start, I think it's good investment. Uh, the people that are paying the occupancy tax are people that are from out of town, I know that we've had pushback from managers and owners of hotels, motels, they're concerned about pricing and what happens. Now, okay, if it's a three percent, five percent, that's going to drive up cost, and then will people choose to go to Binghamton or to Syracuse someplace else for their lodging needs? Um, I, my hope is that the vision continues in terms of developments of exit eleven, and that with further development, further events, and increasing reasons for people to choose exit eleven as opposed to other spots, sign eighty-one will continue to develop. Council thoughts, opinions?
I, I think you're spot on, Mayor.
Uh, no, having, uh, having traveled a lot, uh, through my, through my career, uh, I've always been one to, uh, uh, choose a hotel and motel close to where I was going, uh, because, you know, uh, you know, some of your meetings started, uh, around eight or eight thirty, you know, that means getting up at six and having to drive twenty, thirty miles, and then having to drive all the way back, uh, to me, it wasn't feasible. Uh, and I'm, I'm sure other people look at that, if there's enough reason for them to stay right here uh, without venturing, uh, elsewhere, then, uh, we would have a goldmine here in this city.
Right.
I agree.
You know, more, maybe more restaurants in that area, uh, uh, the Ramada for, uh, whatever reason, so we still don't know exactly what their plans are at this point, or when they intend to open.
Yeah, well, I can tell you that, uh, and I can share contact information if you want to talk to the new owners, but way back, gosh, was that October or September, I did go over and meet with the new owners and did a walkthrough, and the former Ramada Inn had a complete tear out, all the rooms. Like every single room was completely being torn out, rebuilt, uh, you know, not just slapping paint and wallpaper, talking all the way down to sheetrock and the flooring being replaced, and their vision for that structure was really good, and hey, I'll take the opportunity to give kudos to, uh, Roy Everett who's here and a couple others, because when the, when a previous owner decided to walk away from the property, uh, and it left it in arrears, in the city, we could have just put it up for auction, but we were able to work with the company that took it into receivership, and instead of the property being closed down, uh, Roy and others in code were able to work with the management and make sure that the rooms that were up to code were able to be used, and what that did was that allowed the company to make a little bit more and invest a little bit more in the property. So that property had issues, and between police and code, we were dealing with issues on a regular basis. But I firmly believe that our partnering with the property owners, different owners at different times now, uh, we've, we've hopefully helped them get to a place where that will once again be a nice thing to see when you come off the interstate. And for people visiting, a nice place to stay, it's got great potential. But, you know, that again, that's not something that just kind of happened on its own, that was city staff at work and a little bit of guidance, a little bit of handholding, and there was some creative thinking in terms of helping make sure that rooms were going to be safe when they were occupied, especially on a graduation weekend when everybody's looking for a room. So kudo, kudos to our fire and police staff in terms of who's been dealing with the code issues and other questions that arose. So kudo, kudos to our fire and police staff in terms of who's been dealing with the code issues and other questions that arose.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, the next steps, agenda item sixteen again, uh, for occupancy tax. Uh, in terms of next year and mayor and council continuing the discussion and deciding if this is what is desired. And then uh, what does that look like? And one of the conversations had been about dedicating revenue. And dedicating revenue to certain things that would either help the area, meaning that specific area, draw a footprint and say, okay, some investment here and/or events that put heads in bets, you know, things that are going to continue. And maybe it's partnerships in terms of like the regional sports council and the work that they do. Because there's phenomenal work that Michelle Phelps and her group does with bringing events to our community. So we can move on to seventeen, future city meetings virtually after December thirty first. Counsel, I encourage the four returners to have discussions about what you are comfortable with. It doesn't have to be Zoom. You know, when there's change, that's, we've discussed this in the past. That's when it's a great opportunity to look at options. It could be a different platform if it's virtual. When, not if, meetings go back to in-person. Part of the discussion had been, hey, can we keep the virtual component? And I can tell you that we've had, uh, discussions internally about how we could do that. And in the past as a city, you know, could we livestream our meetings? And currently, city government does not have that infrastructure. So one of the options might be a community partner. And is there somebody, is there an organization that could handle livestream of meetings and make us more accessible, make city government more, more accessible the way that we are currently accessible? Thoughts and feedback? Y'all need to make a decision before January fourth.
I would really like to continue virtual meetings as long as the latest variant of COVID is circulating as as much as it is. Omicron, Omnicrom, I'm still confused about how to pronounce it. But New York is, you know, has more of it than any other state in the union, apparently, according to the Cortland newspaper. Um, Portland Standard. I would, um, I hope that the new mayor reaches out to those of us who have been on council and will continue to be on council. To discuss this as well. So that we can set something up before the, before the next meeting. Would night be nice to know what's going on?
Well, and I would, I, I understand Katie and I wholeheartedly agree in terms of communication, keep the lines open and uh, the mayor, the way it is framed in the charter, the mayor runs the council meetings, but it is the council's meeting. Uh, that's why the mayor does not vote unless there's a tie, uh, maintaining the meeting. But hey, it's, it's the eight people on council, it's your meeting and, you know, it's good to have the thought and the discussion, so.
Well, I would, um, maybe Devin could send those of us who are going to still be on council. The new council members and the new mayor's contact information so that we can reach out and do that. I won't be going to the, um, swearing in ceremony. Um, because as many of you know, I recovered from, um, cancer this past year. And as a result, my, um, my vaccinations were, um, have been rendered, uh, in, ineffective. I have no antibodies. Until one of the drugs I was treated with clears my system. So I have to be especially careful and have been avoiding all kinds of events that I would have liked to have attended this past year, even when things opened up a little more. So um, I won't be at that one, but I welcome the new people. I'm really gonna miss, really gonna miss the old people. Old being a manner of speaking. Brian, I think you've done such a great job and it's been my pleasure. And, um, I'm of serving with you and I'm very proud of the work that we accomplished together as a council along with John. And, you know, Bruce, you were a great addition. Jackie, you were a great addition. And just, it's just been really, really wonderful. Sam, you were a late addition. What a wonderful addition, new blood, youth, new ideas, new enthusiasm. It's gonna be hard to start over without you, but I'm looking forward to the new crew and we'll see what we can do.
Well, thank you, Katie. And, and right back at you, lady. It was, uh, it was terrific working with you too.
I hope we can still do some work together, Bruce. Yeah.
I'm sure Bruce is gonna be some committee openings.
Merry Christmas.
Got the right idea, Tom.
Oh, he just never stops.
Good. Boards and commissions is difficult.
To continue on with the discussion just a little bit more, uh, I know there's, there's people that have tried to, tried to, uh, log, logging down these Zoom meetings and without much success. So I'm, I'm thinking there, there's still probably some people out there that prefer not to, not to show up in public, but would like to know what's going on. Um, I guess I'd like to see a, a combination of, of both. So you, so you have an option. Uh, let's give her, give her taxpayers an option.
So basically a live stream from a third party?
Yeah, from a third party or whatever. And, uh, and if, uh, and have a and if you want to host a meeting, uh, uh, not virtually, but in person, uh, that's fine too, because there's still people that would like to get out. On a Tuesday night that, uh, don't have anything else going on.
Isn't that what the Cortland Voice does for us? They're the third party. They livestream this. I, I understand we have quite the following. Quite the lively chat that goes on during these meetings.
They do. Uh, I don't know whether it's, uh, it's a Tim's system or what, but uh, every so often there's a big void in it and you, you're waiting for it to kind of pick up again. Uh, I don't know whether, uh, uh, it's in his uh, equipment or it's just a glitch in communications or whatever. But I've, I've heard that complaint from several individuals that try to, try to watch it. And listen in.
Good reason to contact him and ask him about it.
Yeah. Now that, the, the, the piggyback on your, Katie, uh, I remember, uh, when Brian was a city councilman and, uh, he didn't have any gray hair at that point. And I, I see now that, um, it's kind of speckled a little bit here and there, especially in his beard.
Yeah, and the beard.
I'm hoping that didn't come from, uh, the ten years as, uh, being a mayor.
Maybe a little bit.
I don't think I had gray hair ten years ago either, Tom.
You, you, you're probably right. Yes. Yes.
And you had more of it.
Yep.
All right, I'm gonna gently nudge this towards agenda item number eighteen. In a very non-easy to segue manner, uh, we need a discussion. We have to set a date for a local law regarding a change in zoning uh, for solar farms. And the potential change, the recommended change was for ground-mounted units to be allowed with a special permit, special permit only. But there needs to be a public hearing. So council, would it be your desire to do that January four?
Hey, Brian, can I just ask a quick question? I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna be here on January fourth, but wasn't there also, it was restricted to certain areas with a special permit?
Yes, you are correct. I, hang on, I believe I
Like industrial or something like that?
All right. Industrial permitted and specially permitted uses, solar ground-mounted units permitted and general industrial district with a special use. Yes. So thank you for asking the clarification. I did not make that clear.
And I'm glad to see the council is going to act on this. I think Tom and I were talking about this over a year ago. Especially trying to get some solar cells over there on the Rosen site, which really isn't good for anything but that, the, the portion that we were talking about. So, you know, it's, this is, you know, another example of the government moving, moving slowly but surely. It looks like you're headed in the right direction. So as far as I'm concerned, you guys, if you folks should have this hearing in law as soon as possible, so we can get back to those folks and see if they still want to pay us a little money to put some solar cells up over on the Rosen site, which is just sitting there right now.
I guess I was under the impression way back when Bruce said, uh, they had the green light to go ahead and start with that.
Well, yeah, we did, but we needed to make the zoning change. If for some reason it just kept getting clogged up and I, I don't know what the reason is, but I'm glad that it's finally finally freed up and you guys are moving forward with it. So, and I hope the folks still want to work with us.
That's still moving along. So January four.
Sounds good.
Yep. All right. And then this would be also in terms of zoning, set a date for a public hearing for a local law regarding dispensaries and zoning in particular in the city. And we're talking specifically, uh, would be a cannabis dispensary act. Uh, so the city uh, we, we are opting into the ability for there to be a business that can sell cannabis. And what we can regulate is where it can be in terms of zoning. And, you know, it'll be up to mayor, council to make the decision next year, but uh, for there to be a change to zoning needs to be a local law. So it has to go through the process. And as I look at the big map on the wall, there, there's general business one, which is a specific area, very concentrated by the exit eleven interchange, interchange that would keep things in one place. Uh, but it'll be up to new council, new mayor to determine what makes sense to move forward with this. Uh, would ask if council is willing to schedule a public hearing for January four. So it would be two public hearings, January four.
Almost, I would almost say may, make it the second meeting in January, uh, not knowing uh, what's gonna be scheduled for the first meeting.
Okay.
The, uh, it can be one, it could be both. You know, as you know, we've had a number of things that we've had them on the agenda more than once in terms of the public hearing. So if somebody missed or they didn't know about it, hopefully they heard about it at the first public hearing, then that would give them the opportunity at the second. But council, you tell me.
We could set up too, Tom, and just have a little discussion. Ask for it to be a discussion. I don't want the first one just to kind of get the ball rolling.
We can. I, I hate to bog up somebody's agenda, not knowing what the agenda might be. Uh, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of changeover, uh, that we're gonna have to address at some point.
Say we go to the second meeting.
Okay.
I just think it's gonna be too, for the new mayor and all that, it's gonna be too much. So second meeting is good.
Okay.
January eighteen. Excuse me. Very good. All right, there's a couple of things. Any further discussion on that? Okay, we do have the opportunity for an executive session, but here it says a word from the mayor that is obviously mis- uh, mislabeled. It's several words that I'd like to share. So as my last sharing my last common council meeting, I'd like to share a couple of thanks and some thoughts. And some of these things will be relevant to some of you and want to give the opportunity for recognize some people who have been very helpful and instrumental. Uh, so you know, this office has had a lot of meaning and a lot of different things that have come in and through. Uh, but I tried to adhere to three things that I preach with my swimmers. And one is a work ethic and always trying to do things to the best of the ability. And sometimes you feel like, oh, that's as much as I can give. But if more is needed, you figure out how to give more. So having a hard work ethic, I think, has been important, not just for the mayor's role, but also for people on council. And you know, it trickles down, department heads, all city employees. You know, when you're heading up an organization, hopefully you're able to role model what you expect of others. And I've mentioned the second thing to a couple of people, and I like to use the word being intrepid. And we could say creative or innovative. The number of things that I had no clue about that came across my desk. But I needed to learn about and then needed to have conversations with people to learn not just the facts, but also the opinions and to get different perspectives. And then creative solutions. I mean, some of the things that have been accomplished. It's been finding ways to get things done when there was no path that was clear. So it's been a challenge at times, but it's been a rewarding challenge. The third is the most important, and that's being great teammates. And I talk about the partnership and the relationship that, uh, I've had with all of you on council. Your predecessors in terms of people that were on council before some of you. And I'll give a shout out. Tom, you've been here longer than I am. And now Katie Silman, John Bennett, at the end of this year, you're hitting ten years, are you not? And there's not many people that have done that. And for all, everybody on council who is present and people who have preceded, uh, our ability to partner and to work together, I think was very important. And, you know, being in office, um, some of the thank yous, obviously the voters, the fourth ward, I was a representative for the fourth ward for two terms. And with five terms as mayor, every time I still remember when I put my hand up at that swearing in, um, kind of feeling some weight. You know, the weight of the responsibility and the thought that, hey, there's a lot of things that will come up and things that we need to do. But knowing that we had excellent community partners, council, other organizations, individuals made things a lot easier. And I'd like to thank anybody who voted for me. Your faith, um, meant and does mean a good deal. Our community partners. Essentially every organization, every business, the people who stepped forward to volunteer time to make life better for those around them, not just for themselves. We've had tremendous, we've got tremendous organizations, not just the nonprofits, although that heads up the list in a lot of respects. But there is a lot of people that help make Cortland what it is. And a big thank you to all of our community partners. City residents who volunteer for our boards and our commissions, they provide sounding board, they dedicate their time. And it's not always easy. I get that. And we don't always recognize when people are getting the hards, the hard work done. Our department heads and our employees, tireless efforts. And there's different challenges. The last year and a half really has brought to a head some of the things that need to get done. And under the most challenging of circumstances, I cannot think of a bigger challenge than people worrying about not just everybody, but okay, my own personal health and wellbeing might be a risk. And people throughout our community continuing and our department heads, our employees continuing to put forward their best efforts to serve the public to a high level. Council, and I mentioned current and past, I appreciate the fact that it has been a team effort. It's been collaborative. I definitely want to thank, uh, John- Uh, I definitely wanna thank uh, John Bennett could not be here today. But I actually got a picture and I think this was, you know, Tom, you mentioned about gray hairs. I think this was just before our first meeting. I don't know, we, we looked a little bit younger, full John and I. And you know, you also, Tom, you said something about whether or not it ages you and maybe some of the grays. Well, I saw John last week, so here's us. Full disclosure, I don't have the rights to that. It's not my picture. But John has been uh, deputy mayor for six years. And has taken a lot of calls. I've sought feedback of a lot of people. Uh, but none more so than John in terms of decisions and how to do things. Uh, one of the things that I've really appreciated his forthrightness and his directness. And it can be termed brusque at times, but just an honest man who uh, was a great partner. To have as we went through the last couple of years in terms of making some challenging decisions. And getting us where we needed to be. So as for the future. Uh, the four people who are coming off of council know that you are appreciated and the efforts that you have put forth. Uh, have resonated with people far more than you know. And the good things that have occurred over your tenure, uh, it's a testament to what you have done. And that goes also for the four that are continuing and the four that are continuing. I hope you continue to do what you have done for me. And what you've done for me is you've asked questions. They've not always been easy questions. We've disagreed at times, but we've talked it through. And you've worked with everybody. You've worked with each other. You've worked with community partners. Uh, with new people coming on, there's going to be that learning curve. And you have supported what is best for the city. Over politics. And if there's uh, one thing that people listening in today should realize. Uh, our elected officials are all elected, running for office because they wanna do something good for their community. And as we wrap up two thousand and twenty-one, there's a lot of good that has happened, not just this year, but past years as well. And I know that when December of two thousand twenty-two rolls around. The mayor elect and council elect for next year, you're gonna have a good year. You're going to make strong decisions. And continue to make Cortland a great place to live. And I firmly believe that Cortland is one of the best places to raise a family.
Thank you, Mayor, for your service.
Thank you for indulging me here at the end of the meeting.
Thank you for your ten years, Mayor. Thank you.
It was a great ten years, Brian. Plus, plus the four years I've known you before that. Uh, we've had a lot of conversations together and. And I'm sure that we'll uh, continue on uh, with some of these.
Absolutely. Like I said, the um, elected officials, current and future, I know that you're all in it for the right reasons. And the guidance will continue to be there. So I leave knowing that the city is in good hands. Nine people that'll be here next year. Uh, we did have a request for an executive session from, from council. So I can ask and entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session. From Katie Silman and second Bill Carpenter, Rick Mandonsel has a hand up. Rick?
Who do you want to come into the meeting?
Uh, assume you. And council, if there's anybody else, feel free to text me. I'm opening a room.
Do we have to vote on?
Oh, yes, please. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. So before we close out here, Brian, I just wanna say I appreciate working with all my colleagues. You guys are the best and it was always great. We could have votes and we didn't always agree. On political things, but it was never, it never felt personal and I, it was never personal from my perspective and never felt personal from any of you folks, so. In today's day and age, that's a minor miracle, so hats off to all of you.
Now, Bruce, it's certainly been a, like I said, uh, been a pleasure working with you the, the last several years here.
Hats off to all of you.
And, and Sam, I just uh, wish I had, had gotten to know you better uh, in your short time. Uh, you certainly added a lot to the council that uh, was deeply appreciated.
I think so.
And I think we have amazing department heads, by the way, that just, they all do a terrific job and they're. Sometimes people don't realize how much work they're doing behind the scenes that, that nobody sees and, and I, and I get to, when you get to see it, when you're on the council or the mayor, so. That's it. Thanks, Mayor, for letting me share a few thoughts.
Yeah, and, and, and Jackie, I wished that uh, we had the opportunity to work uh, more closer with our two wards, uh, being that they were, they were next door. Uh, there's still a lot of things going on that uh, uh, you're gonna be, be missing.
You're gonna like working with Seth then. He's gonna be right next door.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I know my time here was short, but I uh, very much appreciated, you know, learning from all of you and being able to participate and help out. The, you know, the council and the community and um, so it was a good experience and I hope to be back one day.
Good.
There you go.
I neglected to ask council to adjourn from executive session. Motion to adjourn from executive session, Bill Carpenter, second Katie Silman, all those in favor of journeying from executive session, please say aye. Okay, we are back in regular session. Uh, do have a request. Um, a resolution to approve the format and the standard terms and also to acknowledge. The respective appendix A for each department head regarding contracts and respective compensations for. Compensation for department heads. Uh, motion to consider. Katie Silman, second. Jackie Chapman and point of information for the public, part of the comptroller's audit revealed that uh, there is a recommendation that we have. Individual contracts with department heads. Um, there's been some clear and some not as clear guidelines. And. Compliment Corporation Council because with his leadership, we have a uh, standard terms that will be consistent. One individual to the next and then there will be an appendix A, which would be for each person. So it would always be A, but members' contracts, it'll be in the appendix, what the compensation package is. So the standard terms outlines their employment. And then the uh, compensation. Covers what they get paid and the other benefits. So council, further discussion? Mr. Michaels?
Yep, there was uh, there was one item that slipped by me and that was uh. You know, we kept going back to um, uh, the civil service position. And then uh, referencing uh, things out of that. Now, is this still considered civil service or is it? Is it their own individual contracts now or?
For department heads?
No, the department heads, yeah.
Any termination has to follow civil service law seventy-five. Uh, each one of the department heads had to take a civil service test in order to be qualified for that particular position. Uh, Mac and I are exempt, uh, so that's why we did the letter of understanding. So yes, we still have to follow civil service rules. If there to be a termination or a suspension or anything like that, so that, there's just rules, it's a monopoly game.
Yep, yep. Okay, good. Thank you. Very good. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. Is there any further business to come before the council?
Yeah, Brian?
That would be Ray Parker, the city clerk.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you who I've worked with for the last eight years. Um, this is my last session as well. So I just wanted to say thank you for all your professionalism and everybody I've worked with. It's, it's been fantastic.
Well, thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Ray. You, you're gonna be missing uh, especially all of our interesting conversations that uh, we've had.
Yeah, hopefully I wasn't the one that caused your gray hairs.
No.
Yours will be typical shoes to fill, Ray, here. Your phenomenon and a professional.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and I always appreciate it, Ray. Whenever I called you for some help, you were there to help me out. Thank you.
Uh, no problem, sir.
Just no more dogs at two thirty in the morning, okay?
Sadly, we lost him last year, so he's.
I'm sorry.
He's not gonna be hitting up the liquor stores anymore. Uh, we had a dog that used to break out once in a while and they'd find him at the liquor store down on Rotten Adams.
Why is that, Bruce?
I don't know, I guess. He must have been looking for my brother or something, I don't know.
Well, once again, I, I wanna thank everybody and especially Brian. Um. Uh, you know, for the last eight years, working with you, I've learned a lot about uh. Uh, professionalism, how to discuss and talk with people and I think it's actually helped me in my, you know, personal life with my personal job. And uh, once again, thank you for everything.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
Pleasure.
Yes, thank you.
And before uh, close out, finishing on thank yous, I'll throw it back to Ray Parker. He's been an outstanding city clerk, stepped in and. Uh, has always been able to answer questions and Mr. Bandonsel. Uh, I, there are very few people that work harder than this guy. And man, I don't know if I could give a bear, bigger compliment. Rick, you've uh, carried more than your share of the water. I appreciate what you've done. Thank you so much.
You know. Thank you.
I have called Rick numerous times and I know how busy he is and I'd always say, Rick, you know, I'd tell him who I am and. Do you have a couple of minutes? And he'd say, yes, I sure do. And he, you would always take whatever it took to help me out, Rick. And I know at the time I was calling you, you probably had six other balls juggling in the air, so thank you for that. I really appreciate, appreciated that.
He's a big part of the city's continuity.
Right.
You just kept the gears going.
Very good. So council, we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, Sam Adams, second Bruce Tyler, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. And my last comment is a big thank you to my kids and my wife for allowing me to have this enjoyable wild ride for the last ten years and. Hey, dad's coming home. Good night.
Please do.
Bye bye.
Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.